Clock or appointed hour and note that we do have a quorum. One of the first things that we need to do because we have Carl Wilson online. Vote to allow Carl to be online to meet the Open Meetings Act. So put out a motion. Thank you. Second, thank you. Hello, it's a famous thing of saying aye. Aye. Although opposed, same sign. Okay, Carl, you can now participate and vote at the same time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. My apologies. I just got out of a project meeting. Thank you for letting me participate.
Good. Okay, first up is election of officers. And in order to do that, since I am interested in continuing in my position, I'm going to actually have to turn to a chair pro tem. And that actually will be our executive director who will conduct the election of the officers.
I'll take nominations for the chairperson for this candidate year, I guess, or up till when the next election will be next year.
I'll nominate Carl.
Okay, we have nominations. Carl, any other nominations?
Carl, second.
Do we have other nominations? Okay, so we only have Carl being nominated for elections. So whoever in favor of that nomination, please say aye. Opposed, hearing none. So thank you, Carl, for another year of service.
One more year. One more year.
The famous one more year.
Yeah, no, it's definitely one more year. That's it.
We'll record that in the minutes.
Please do.
So I'll turn the gravel back to the YouTube.
All right. We now have open positions for the vice presidential position. Is there a nomination for that? Okay, I can't, can I nominate someone?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to nominate Jim Frun for the vice president position.
Second.
Thank you. Are there other individuals who'd like to throw their hat into the ring?
Does Jim want to throw his hat in the ring?
Do you accept that nomination?
I seconded it with caution.
Without further ado, moving forward, I'll close off nominations. Jim is our only individual who is running for vice chair. All those in favor of Jim continuing as vice chair, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Jim, welcome back again. And then finally, we have one position for the designated representative to the executive committee. Do I have a nomination for that position?
I'll make Katie for that.
Okay. Katie, I assume looks up?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there anyone else?
I'll second them.
Okay. Anyone else who'd like to put in a nomination? If not, I'll close off nominations and move to vote. All those in favor of Katie continuing in the role of the designated MCRP member of the executive committee, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, we have our elections completed.
Is it certified?
And certified. Let's move on to public comment. We don't have any public comment?
No, we don't.
Okay. And I would like to, before we go any further, introduce a new commission member. Fred joins us as a representative from the county. Fred, little introduction to the rest of the commissioner?
I far with my family in the Carlock area and have been involved in the past township government. I was road commissioner for four terms. And then I was a director on the County Farm Bureau's board for 27 years.
Oh, my God.
Been around for a few years.
Good. Well, welcome. Glad you could join us. And now, before we get into the consent agenda, we also have two new staff members that I'd like to have Ray introduce to us.
Yeah, we excited to have two new community planners who've joined us most recently. And as you all know, we've become sort of staff. And so we glad to have to have join us and let them to introduce themselves. Suddenly, then we have another assistant planner joining us next week. So home will be introduced to you at the next meeting. So we, with that, so by next week, we should have full staff again.
Great. And you had, since our last meeting, you did have a reputation, correct?
Yeah, that, so we, oh, Mark Adams, as you all know him, making presentations on housing related stuff. So he has moved on, better things. But good news is he stayed around in the area. So we miss him, but he's, yeah, we stay, keeping in touch. But so, so that, we didn't want that to happen, but it happened. But we thankful that, you know, we do have new staff joining if you all those empty vacancies. So, so, so as of next week, if anything, if the new assistant planner won't change his mind, he's coming all the way, moving here from California. So just that we will have full staff and then we can try to keep doing your, the work that we supposed to be doing. Yeah, so we have maybe Anthony and Luke. I'll let you introduce your styles and, yeah.
My name is Anthony Bowman. I just joined here Monday. I'm originally from Sycamore, Illinois, about two hours north of here. I graduated from ISU with a bachelor's in renewable and sustainable energy and geography. During that time, I interned with Tri-County Regional Planning up there in Peoria. And then after graduation, I interned here at Pin County GIS for a few months. For the last roughly year and a half, I've been with Peoria County Planning and zoning, working on housing rehab grants, zoning permit applications, and plat review, stuff like that. Excited to be here, excited to finally be back in the county and have a plan.
Welcome. Nice to meet you.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. So my name is Luke Taverra. I'm the other community planner. So I started last December. And so I got my master's of urban planning from the University of Illinois at Champaign. Prior to planning, I have a background in research, migration research. Yeah, I am currently handling the regional housing initiative, so I guess I'm Mark's replacement. You'll see more. Thank you. Welcome.
If you recall, Luke used to be, when he was in grad school, he was one of our former planning interns. So it's somewhat knowing our system a little bit.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Good news. Back to our regular agenda. First up is a consent agenda, which includes minutes of our last meeting on December 4th, also the financial plans, and then the staff update. Are there any items that need to be removed from the consent agenda? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Luke, thank you, Bart. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you, Carl. We are on to our regular agenda, which we have no items. So we're on to information and discussion. And not that I'm trying to rush things, but we do have an executive session. And so I'm trying to get through things as much as we possibly can. Okay. So first up, Luke, the regional housing initiative?
Okay. Hi, good afternoon, everyone again. So for local updates, first, we facilitated the Affordable and Supportive Housing, or the ASH Community Meeting, last December 16th. So we presented average report findings, data including data from surveys, focus groups, and 101 interviews, which were conducted earlier in 2024. Next, for the 2025-2029 Consolidated Plan. So we finished the first draft for the executive summary, the needs assessment, and the market analysis chapters. So we've submitted that to the city and the town, pending for review and approval. So currently, we've received a couple of comments from the city, and we're currently working on the second draft, revising those chapters. Next, we are currently working on the third quarter CDBG report for the town. And then we've also submitted the CDBG application for the 2025-2026 program year for the city of Plowton, which we submitted on December 23rd. For regional housing recovery plan updates, for the DCEO Rice Implementation Grant, we are still waiting for, to hear back from them. Hopefully, we hear back sometime this January. And for other matters, we attended the Invest Health meeting on December 10th. Have any questions about the RH5 updates?
Do you have any questions?
You probably know CDBG, now, stands for Community Development Block Grants, is a U.S. federal program under the Department of Housing and Urban Development. So they do a lot of grants on housing, infrastructure improvements, especially for low and other income areas. And so the CDBG grants also require this consolidated plan, what they call consolidated plans. And it's a five, every five years need to be updated. And so we've been working for the city and the town in preparing for the updates, the plan updates. So it's still early part of this year, 2025, and then the city and town will separately hold their different sessions and things like that. So just for newer members who may not, you know, get into the details, but just so.
Thank you. Ray, will it be the same report that comes from both the city and the town? Or will they have their own separate take on it? Or how?
Good question. The final products will have two separate reports. But then along the process, which includes some of the public engagement, we didn't want to, okay, the city and the town. So a lot of public engagement being held, joining for both the city and town. But the survey, which you're familiar with, that we, it was conducted sometime last year. So we tried to have those information. We asked, okay, where you live, Chicago. So we can separate, let's say, city and the town, because the funding, it's really for the city and the town. So there's had to be some separation. So it's a good question. But then we recognize, you know, we don't want to duplicate a lot of efforts, too. So for areas that we, for portions of reports that we can do, like, at the same time, it has integrated content, we do. But if there are certain aspects for certain areas, improvements, strategies, recommendations that are more geography oriented, they will be done separately. But eventually, it'll be separate reports. So the city staff will present a version to the city council. The town staff will do theirs for the town council. Actually, slightly different timing, too, because the program. But good question.
Thank you. We're now on to the Human Services Transportation Plan.
Thank you. As you some of you will recall, we had a meeting of the Joint Policy and Technical Committees of the Region Six Human Services Transportation Plan Group on December 16th, the PONIAC. Unusually, we had presence of county board members who have not previously participated, in particular from Ford County, also county administrative staff from really Livingston and Ford. And I think there was some from New York, too. So a larger group as usual, mostly because they're very concerned. Primary discussion had to do with the consequences of McLean County's decision to withdraw from the Mook County Agreement, under which, for the last 27 years, funding for rural public transit in this, this, actually, six county group, five in our region six, which I know is really confusing. It just works out that way. Anyway, McLean County withdrew from that agreement. So currently, Livingston, Yeracoid, Ford are having discussions about forming a three-county group that would essentially serve the same function, they would do the same thing, but on behalf of the three of them. Kankakee County, which is part of our region, has a separate agreement with IDOT, so they're not part of this. We still have to figure out what to do about doing it and making it part of the six county agreement. From which McLean County has withdrawn, so we're still talking about that. The representatives from Ford County noted some concerns about funding for services for their predominantly rural residents, because they're situated somewhat differently in terms of how their population is distributed and needs that they have. So they're talking again to the others in that group of three, but also to other counties who might have a system that are calculated to meet their needs. So that's an ongoing process. In December, we told you that it was anticipated that connect transit would be fulfilling the rural public transit for McLean County. We have since been informed that that is not in any way decided. And so there are ongoing conversations. That includes conversations with the county, but also connect its home board, as well as conversations and permission that they would need to get from both Bloomington and Normal. Since connect transit is not a mass transit district, it is in fact a creature of Bloomington. So that would be required. We don't know where that sits right now. But we're sort of, you know, part of the problem we're having right now is that we don't have much time, because the current arrangement ends at the end of June this year. So we're kind of up against the wall in terms of getting this work done. We will see what happens. In light of some of the recent war changes as a result of the recent election, I have talked with our representatives to the committees, and they've encouraged me to go forward with the plan to contact the new officials, particularly county board chairs, and just bring them up to speed on what this process looks like and how it works. So that for those who are new to this, we're not going to be asking them to make decisions from nowhere. So I'll be doing that over the next couple of weeks. And that has to do with how the regional process works, but also on the current issues in terms of reorganizing. And then we will meet again on March 17th.
Jennifer, why did they make the decision to do that if we didn't have the successor plan kind of already set? I mean, what was the, what was the driving force behind that that caused that? I guess I'm not aware.
Well, the driving force was the ex-chair of McLean County.
I got you.
And the reasons are not clear to me. You should be discussing with me. And unfortunately, you know, by the time it came to the board, I had known about this for precisely two days before the resolution went to the executive committee, two days later it went to the board. So there wasn't a whole lot of time in which any of us who were involved in this process on a continuing basis were able to say, you might want to stop and think a little bit, or give us more time. Because the original assumption was that the, all the organizations, the counties and the organizations involved would have a year to 18 months. And instead, it's going to be less than a year. So that's kind of an issue. Part of the concern I've had is that we've not been given sufficient time to make this work in a way that serves everyone. I think the county board chair was concerned that the county had been in some way encroached upon and taken advantage of in terms of providing this leadership role for these surrounding counties with far less capacity to handle this process. And that was the driving force from what was said in both executive committee and county board meetings. And given time or the opportunity, I think it could be the case that someone more deliberate approach wouldn't harm McLean County and would be beneficial to the others, but did not do that.
Any chance that that decision could be reversed?
I think at this juncture, nobody that I know of has proposed that, suggested to the new board, under its new leadership, that that be considered.
If I may, I think it would just defer to the new county board and what they want to do there.
And of course, the problem then becomes, even if they wanted to reverse it, Showbus, the previous provider here in McLean County, or it seemed to be previous, may not be inclined to.
Want to do it again.
Move forward under those conditions, because trust has really been broken.
Yeah, and I don't know if you are in a position to answer this question, but what would happen to some of the facilities that Showbus has up in, like, in Chinoa?
Yeah.
That has been raised, in part because there are pending grants from IDOT to improve
those facilities. And I think that Showbus feels and their board feels that if they're not operating in McLean County, they see no reason to go forward with grants for a facility that they would not be using or not have a need to use. As I mentioned, we also have a problem of figuring out how to keep making county, which of course is its own MPO and does have a transit system, and Duick County, which doesn't, doesn't, afloat. And of course, the closest, the obvious path between the northern edge of this group and the southern group is through McLean County. And that's creating some issues about how we go ahead and coordinate any service that might be provided in McLean County by whoever with the service and the rest of the region. And the regions are something that IDOT created, and they've been in place for quite some time. And we're now confronted with a region kind of holding.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
If anyone has questions about the process overall or why this exists, give a call and have me run through it. It's one of those things that's been long in creation, and it just morphs every so often. Thank you very much.
But again, just for the newer members, when you see, not to take a lot of the time, when you see that HSCP update, actually, what Jen described was what the issue is going on. But I don't want you to be sidetracked by the fact that the HSCP actually is an agreement between IDOT and MCRPC. And the agreement that Jen was referring to is an agreement between McLean County and those other six counties. And so it's a separate thing. However, it does relate to the HSCP. And the HSCP, like I said, is a agreement between IDOT and MCRPC. And there are five counties involved, Livingston, Ford, Kankakee, Yeracoid, and McLean County, those five. Now, you just remember what she just mentioned, those six other counties, some of those are not within the planning areas that this HSCP, that we are responsible for IDOT. So the focus for our job is on the HSCP, while there are some issues that are related. But I just want us to know, hey, is the HSCP that we, you know, to answer to IDOT for? And so we are working with the other counties together, but there's some counties affected by this issue, just everywhere.
We've had that role with IDOT with regard to the HSCP process since 2010. So I've been doing this for quite a while. And that apparently, as things stand right now, we will keep that hat with respect to this for IDOT. I've also been operating as the county's compliance oversight monitor, separate issue and under county's agreement with IDOT, not ours. And that apparently will go away, as soon as the county, McLean County, gets contracted or will provide, because they expect that new provider to provide that responsibility.
You're setting no tears about that.
I'm just, I'm in crisis.
Thanks, Jennifer. Okay, we're now on to the Veterans Parkway Quarter Plan Update. Ray?
Yeah, the Project Stream Committee, they met, since your last meeting, they met once in December, middle of December. And so the preliminary current conditions report has been put together by the consultant. So we staffed with me, Bill, and Bob, and comments. So the PSC, the Project Stream Committee members were given opportunity to, and there were a couple comments from members, one member, two members, from the committee. The committee will meet again this Friday. They usually meet once a month. And then the, some of the more immediate things that they will be doing, or have started doing, is the public engagement. There were some focus group meetings held, there will be some more to be held, and then the survey, there will be a survey that we will put up or distribute the flyers to, and I'll email you after the meeting, because we're finalizing the flyers to promote the survey. So that's to get public input, and the survey is now opened, and it ends, it closes on February the 10th. And it's already on our website, on our website. But we also try to push it through different channels, we'll ask your help, you know, through the rural area, in urban, wherever, groups that you connected with, and get the word out, because a lot of people do use Veterans Parkway. We want to get people, you know, input and feedback. And so that's important. So that's, and then while the consultants, besides the engagement, will continue to do other, other work, they will do other work, they will keep working with them on that. And so there are the opportunities. And also, thank you, Carl, the screen for offering an idea, maybe at the airport, there's another gateway for people who rely on Veterans Parkway to, to get to it from the airport. So we are considering if there's a venue or some way that we can also try to get feedback from the travelers, or even the freight folks.
Thanks, Ray. Is there anything else that needs to come before the committee, before we go into an executive session?
I just want to say Jennifer, I heard Jennifer's interviews on WGLT. You did a great job. It was very well done.
We were also able to get slots on WJBC, which I had never done before, so that was a whole of rumors, something like doing it live.
Yeah.
And also WEK, terrifying, emergency station over in Peoria. And several people have buttoned me and said, oh, I saw you on television, which is always a terrifying. So we've gotten some response from that and some new ideas about where to do more promotion. And Carl, if you're willing to have a poster in the terminal, I have something in mind. Something to promote this, the Veterans Parkway Study. Can I give you a call or ship you an email once Ray has?
Please, please get ahold of me.
Sure, yeah. Nothing horrendous, but just one more venue to say, see this thing, come answer this thing. And that's, it's, I could just stand in this reporter, I'm not sure if it's going to work out too well. We also did, I was at the pre-Christmas farmer's market over at the arena, a very cold two hours, and I frankly was a little discouraged, because I hadn't had a bunch of flyers about the survey. And I found that a lot had just been tossed aside like 10 feet from where I was standing. So that was discouraging. I probably made the city very mad. I probably made the city very mad. But we will talk to them and fix that. And we'll probably be at the January farmer's market on the 18th, probably more with a poster and more of the consultants and me being cheerful and saying, come talk to our survey. So there we are.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Okay, if not, I would like to, I would entertain a motion to move into executive session. And this must stay for second?
Second.
Thank you. Although it was a favor to say goodbye to saying no, I suppose saying some, all right. We'd ask the sec to leave. Thank you so much for being here.
Welcome. And so on screen, Carl, you may stay. And it looks like Phil has gone. And then Katie is turning, just so you know, she's, she's turning off the light stream. What's that?
The YouTube stream.
Yeah, the light stream, yeah. It's on YouTube. Yeah.